Steve Duncan, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Hi guys.
All right, we will go ahead and call the meeting to order the Wednesday, March 20th. City is on regular council meeting. Start with roll call. Duncan?
Here.
Parliament is absent as well as Gabriel Kramer?
Here.
Whitehead?
Here.
We want to perfect and approve the agenda.
Our move to perfect and approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Gabriel? Yes.
Yes.
All right, next, citizens speak. This is a timer for any items that are not on the agenda. If anybody would like to talk about those. Any comments for the sewer revenue loan? Or I guess those are both items, both public hearing and new business will cover those during those times. But anything outside of those items? All right, next we move on to consent agenda. So the approval minute from March 6th, the regular meeting, approval of listed bills, treasures, reports and transfers. Billing permits, there are a couple, as well as the events, the fire department, street dance. Want to talk about the street dance?
Sure, we had it last year up here at the bandstand area, had blocked off at South Dubuque Street and Highway 1. Just coming, let's see if we can have that again. I think on August 24th, I think I put on there six to 10 like last year, but I'm, if it's okay, maybe move to seven to 11. I know later on we had more of a crowd coming out than early on, so they kind of got go for, not upset, that kind of missed some of it, so just bring that to you if we can get it approved again. We're going to talk to the businesses, both the Legion and Elsal about food and beverages again, so. Like I said, August 24th, hopefully 11 to 7. I go through the city, city boys are going to do some fencing to block it off and stuff like that, so. You know, the question I think I would have or potentially concern is 11 o'clock, we're just making sure that we go through. I don't know if there's concerns, I don't feel left, and as far as the noise ordinance.
What, is it a Saturday?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's cool. Okay. And we have had a history of complaints of the bands, especially outdoor bands, which is why we have in the past few years limited outdoor music to 10. Other than what you think about this one, so. I didn't personally get any complaints last year, I don't know if anyone has been.
But you go until 11 last year, we're at 10. Yes, Warren, Andrew, Steve, any thoughts on pushing it to 11 versus 10 o'clock?
Well, just the only thought I would have is if we do this till 11, then we're gonna have to do that if anybody else wants to go to 11. I haven't had any complaints at all, but that's my thought. Just need to be consistent.
Um, I'm willing to try it. And see how it goes, so if it doesn't go well, then I think we should in the future eliminate.
Andrew, Steve, what do you guys think about that?
That's fine. I mean, I'd always want to revisit if we do get complaints. Probably depends on the band and what kind of music it is.
Non-hard rock.
Okay, good.
With the application, is it all there, 7 to 11? I think I put both of them on. So with a commotion, you just need to have it made with 7 to 11 on there or just approve the application.
Well, I think I just make your, whoever make the, make the motion say whatever time you want for them to approve.
Our move to approve the consent agenda with the Solon Fire Department Street Dance lasting from 7 to 11 p.m.
Second.
All right, Duncan?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Thanks a lot. Well, you guys appreciate it. Next, public works director report sent.
The one thing I got to report is probably seen the big bill in the list of bills for Northway Well and Park. That was the total cost to repair for well number four from Memorial Day. Missed out. And I did turn that into insurance, so we're still waiting to hear about coverage, but should be covered.
City engineer report, Dave?
Yeah, a few things, Trail Ridge Part 2 has picked off. They've been working on installing the sewer out there. They'll continue to work on utilities, getting things ready for grading. We'll be working on a few punchless items from Water Main Project coming up here now that the weather's getting better, trying to get that project finished up. And then next week, we're planning to go with staff to visit wastewater plants. Do a few tours and fix some different equipment and whatnot, so that's what I have.
Doesn't look like he's on.
No.
All right, next we have the public hearing. What's the motion to go into public hearing?
I'll move to go into public hearing.
I'll second.
All right, Duncan?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
All right, we are now in the public hearing. First over to Kenny, Kevin?
I'll start us off this evening. This is a public hearing to enter into a sewer revenue loan in this disbursement agreement with our financing glory, SRF loan program. This program allows cities to apply for a loan up to $3 million to help in the preliminary costs for a major infrastructure, water or wastewater project. We did something similar with the ground storage tank back in 2017. There's a lot of design work and costs that, you know, that are in that preliminary upfront process. That is difficult for cities to come up with that, those dollars upfront. These projects tend to take over a few years. And so what this program does is allow the cities to borrow up to $3 million interest-free to go through that process, the, in the design and those associated costs. Then when it comes time for construction, those fees are rolled into the construction loan. Dave, you want to talk a little bit about the, the timing of the two loans?
Sure, so you can carry this loan, this planning design loan for up to three years. And looking at when we're starting this off, going through the preliminary planning process, facility planning, the detailed design to get the plant specs ready, and then entering into the construction loan after we take bids, that's about a three-year period. And then we have a couple of years of construction after that, so this allows us to take this loan at 0% and borrow against that up until the point that we enter into the construction loan, and we just pull this into that construction loan. So it works out pretty well, it's a nice tool for planning. As Kenny mentioned, it helps with the financing in the interim until you get that construction loan. And then you set that up and pay that out over 20 or 30 years, whatever the city decides to select for the repayment period.
Dave, could you remind everybody where are we at right now in the timeline we just had?
Sure, so we're, we're in the early part of that timeline. We're in the anti-degradation analysis, and that's the first step that we have to go through. Which is looking at different alternatives that we could work through for treatment processes. Once we identify which one is our preferred alternative, then we'll move forward with that in the design process, but we have to let the state review that. There are certain entities that will comment on it. And then once that moves forward, then we get approval, then we can begin the detailed design with whatever that selected alternative is. So we're still in the very preliminary stages of the planning. At this time, what we're looking to do with these site visits is to select the equipment so that we can use those as a method of cost estimating. In the different alternatives, and then we come up with cost for each alternative, and that's somewhat used to select, but primarily what they're looking at is which one is going to be the most environmentally friendly and in essence, not degrading the receiving stream that we discharge into within reasonable cost. So if it's an alternative that is way too expensive to afford, it's not really viable. So we're looking to identify which of these are viable, prioritize them, select one, and then move forward, so. But we have a long road ahead of us, but we're, we're working through it methodically, step by step. And if you recall, we played that out a while back, there's a long blow chart, about 70 steps in it. We're, we're in the very beginning stages of it, which is the plumbing stage, but moving forward.
Thank you, Dave. So Heidi Kuhl was here in December with Northland Security. She, she presented some preliminary estimates, and her preliminary estimate based on the information shared with her from day this 27 and a half million dollars for the new sewer plan. So, you know, those are the preliminary numbers that we are working under right now until we get farther into this process where some actual design and things are happening. And, and we can firm up those numbers, but from right now, we're working in that 27 and a half million estimated preliminary cost. How this works for us for the SRF loan is the dollars are spent, whether engineering or whatever the, the costs are associated with this early phase. Those dollars are, are, are those, bills are paid by the city, and then once they're paid by the city, then we ask for a reimbursement loan from the SRF program. So we still need to pay for the costs upfront, and then we are reimbursed. So it's not money that comes to us first, we need to spend it and then verify that those were actual costs associated with the program. Am I right to say that the acquisition of the, of the property can be part of the planning and design loan?
It can be, but we have to make sure that we get through the environmental clearance process before we can get reimbursed for the property purchase. It's just a timing situation, it's something that we have to work through as part of the project anyhow. So even though we've incurred the cost for the property acquisition, until we get through the environmental review, we can't borrow, we can't get reimbursed for that cost.
As far as the, the final cost, I know you both touched on this a little bit, we wouldn't find out what the final cost is until we find out just the big grant.
Until it goes to bed, and in, in some regards, there are certain contingencies that are in there that we build in. And if we use those, that would, that would be there. If we don't use them, it would be less than that total moral amount that we end up entering into.
No, no, this is a little bit off topic, but tied to this, where I just want to go over just kind of the background on this as far as the need for this. We talked through why this is needed now, is it because of the growth? You hear a lot of comments around down, but it's because of the new developments. Is this tied to, it is because of growth or because of the age of the system or the, can you just kind of talk a little?
Sure, so there, there are a number of things that influence the decision. New, new standards, new requirements, when we look at nutrient reduction requirements that the N R has calculated as part of their stream studies, they say that we have to make sure that we can get nitrogen phosphorus levels down to a certain amount. That's going to be coming out soon, so we have to make sure that our facility can achieve that. We know that's coming up, we have a number of other things that, that influence it too. Not only growth that is going to cause us to have to do something, but also the age of the existing plants, there's a maintenance component to that. And we're looking at the decision on whether we stay with the existing plant and try to build that a little bit more. We also have a constraint there on the site because we have to meet separation distances, so we only have so much more room. We can do some minor improvements to that plant, but we can't continue to grow there. So when we look at it from a cost standpoint, if we were to do a little bit here, then once we get down the road, say 10 years, and we're to a point where we've grown enough that we have to add more tank, but we can't do it at that site. Now all of a sudden, the money we spent for those small improvements have been set there, but we have a bigger project that we have to do again. So we, we have to make a decision at some point to move that facility, and we look at growth, we look at the annexation areas that are possible. We look at the comprehensive plan where growth is expected to occur. All of those things factor in the decision on whether we continue to invest in the site we have, knowing that we're very limited in what we can do there. Or do we move to this other location? And in doing that, we are better set up because we have a process now that is designed to address those nutrient limits that are going to be coming out here shortly and imposed on us. It also gives us more room so that if we have to do additional requirements that come out from being our EPA, they have the site, they have to do that. So we, we don't want to get stuck in a situation where we invest heavily in the existing site, and then all of a sudden we spend all that money and we find out that there's no room to grow, and we've got to go somewhere else, because that's going to be an even larger costs to do that down the road after we've already spent money on the site that we can't use additionally. So a lot of that was discussed, and the decision of maybe the best choice for the city now is to buy the whole, the whole new site. Get everything set up so that once we start seeing these things come in, these nutrient reduction requirements, the additional flaws, the growth areas, all of that. It's, it's been accounted for in the new site, and if it works well, be able to expand and adapt, and that will be true.
Well, if we were to hold tight and not be able to meet those standards, what, what would we see with that? Would we see fines? What, what would come with that if we were not able to meet those requirements?
So there's a, a number of different steps that it goes through. The first step would be a non-compliance. And then if you continue to violate, you get a significant non-compliance or compliance associated with that in the form of administrative penalties. If you continue to violate, then it goes to upper level of DNR. If DNR can't get you to move, that BPA takes over, assumes a permit. Then you get a consent order, administrative consent order, and there are large fines associated with that, including criminal penalties if you willingly continue to violate. And the person that signs up on that, if there are criminal penalties, could end up in jail. In addition to having to do the improvements and pay our fines, we still have the cost to do the upgrades, so. BPA does step in at some point, but there's, there's a hierarchy of kind of the way that things work, and it starts off with the notice violation at the DNR level, we're, we're to have the system.
Other questions? Anybody have? Steve, do you have any questions?
No, just, that was a good recap by Dave. I, I know ever since I've been on the council, we've known that we were probably going to have to look at, you know, another site for a new treatment plant, so it's not something that we haven't known about for quite a while. I think it's a combination of the, the age of our, our treatment plant plus, plus growth, yeah? It's gonna happen no matter one way or the other.
Questions or comments before we open up? I know there's some folks that have some questions on. All right. Tony, I know you had some questions, did you want to jump in and?
My name is Tony Russo. I appreciate the time. As I'm sure you're aware, there is a lot of concern in Solon, and I spent the weekend going door to door, a lot of doors. And nobody wanted to come to the meeting, and that's all right. I'll, I'll speak for the people that I spoke with. There's a strong feeling and concern that Solon an accepted fact, that Solon is building beyond its infrastructure. And it's not just the water and sewer, the sewer plant in particular. It's law enforcement, streets, sidewalks, traffic capacity, staffing, space, equipment, et cetera. And along with that concern, there's a greater concern that Solon is also going beyond its capacity to comfortably finance to come, to comfortably, comfortably finance some of these projects without neglecting other necessary projects and without a potentially larger financial impact on Solon residents. Especially those on fixed incomes and lower income. The thought of a, of a rising sewer bill and the information that was in the paper from the, the Northland Public Finance discussion, which was well documented in the December 28, 2023 Congress, Chris Umshad, the fantastic coverage, and I have copies for everyone. She's quoted. And her comments I think cause a lot of this concern, because it makes you realize where this potentially could go. The council is essentially asking us to sign a blank check for the sewer improvements and for this, for development, the cost of increasing the development. And I say that, or we say that, by, by the council's own descriptions, currently these costs are estimates, and once you have your planning and, and design study, which is part of the, of the process, which $3 million is four. Were told however by the Director of Public Finance with Northland, this is an important quote, she says, "The proposals to handle the debt are only estimates based on the estimates that we have now, the current projected cost of the project." And are subject to change based on any increases in cost as well as actual operating revenues and expenditures, including maintenance. This is essentially a blank check at this point. And for it to come from our water and sewer, there's no escaping it. And the, the plan that she gave, the suggestions, I don't know the results of that meeting, but the plan to give a three-fold attach, the, the $20 million loan through the, the, the state revolving fund. And, and she said that anything in addition to this, if this is all dependent on certain factors, that the operating cost and inflation and everything stays the same. But if it doesn't, if it doesn't, nobody, nobody's got any guarantee for anything. I recognize you don't have the, the estimates, let alone a bid out. There's a lot of questions, but this is a big question. Is how, how large an impact is this going to be on, on, on this community with our sewer bills? And the development west of town, Trail Ridge, was turned down twice by planning and zoning, twice. And they ended up just circumventing P and G, went right to council and got approved. So there was essentially, um, there was essentially no quote-unquote plan regarding issues of cost, impact, alternative, or cost shared for infrastructure with the developer.
Tony?
Excuse me?
You are, yes.
I'm not? Over a few minutes?
Yes.
Is it all right to, I only have another half a page.
With the, the questions I feel, we, we discussed in what we're trying to do just with the consistency, so whether we have one person that wants to speak or 100 people that want to speak, we want to have it consistent, so regardless of the topic, that we give everybody the, the equal and a fair amount of time, whether the room's packed or.
So it wouldn't be possible to, the, the reason that I, I asked for 30 more seconds is because this is the largest debt we have ever incurred, because nobody understands, there's a lot of questions that people feel like this council is asking us to sign a blank check, and that the impact on, on, on all of this, there's no ceiling for raising the percentage, the annual 2%, for the, we're raising our debt levy $5 to $10, that's $60 right there for people on fixed income, this is terrifying. And I, 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 I pitch a, but I don't, I don't mean to be, to abuse it, but I have to fight for what needs to be said, forgive me for that, I don't need to be rude. But I, I have to tell you, um, we're using loss and, and the TIP for so many things, so many things. We would like the city to come up with a list of everything that we're now saying it's either going to be TIP or loss. What, how is that going to impact other needs for TIP or loss? And to say, to say nothing of, um, our cash reserve that, I don't see how we're going to have any money left, and if there is, we need to see it. And I have to speak for everybody that's terrified about what's going to happen.
If you have additional questions, feel free to turn them off, or, or get a hold of us, but just to be respectful of the process.
Yes, and, and I apologize to being, but I feel at some point, somebody has to buck this process until we get some answers. Thank you for your courtesy, I apologize for my lack. Thank you.
For any others that have questions or comments on the, the loan for the public hearing? With that, you have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
All right, Duncan?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
All right. Now we are out of the public hearing, we moved on to new business. We have resolution 2413, resolution of taking additional action with respect to sewer revenue loan and dispersment agreement and authorizing, approving and securing the payment of a $3 million sewer revenue loan and dispersment agreement. This patient, subject note, I L A, interim loan and dispersment agreement. If any additional comments on that aside from what was covered during the public hearing?
This resolution is approving the actual loan and authorizes some of the mayor's staff to sign the actual loan documents.
Any questions or comments, Andrew, Lauren, or Steve?
No, I don't.
You have a motion for resolution 2413 at all?
I'll move to approve. I don't have it in front of me, 2417, is that what it is?
2413.
13, okay.
I'll second.
All right, Duncan?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us down to other business, so council committee?
Well, Personnel Committee has been busy interviewing for the finance officer position. I think we are in the final stages, hopefully within the next few or so, we'll have an announcement to make. The I know Scott mentioned did get wanting to get the streets together, don't know if you have anything formal he said yet, Scott? Utilities has been working on a handful of sewer, water and sewer forgiveness requests. Also, I want to extend an invitation to the Utilities Committee who would want to go to tours or plans with us on Monday. I'll send out that information to the Utilities Committee, you know, kind of logistics of that. And then the Police Committee is going to be, now that we're wrapping down budget, we are going to meet, there was one meeting with the Sheriff's Department, and I believe the next step was for the Police Committee to have some just kind of internal meetings and talk about what a potential longer return contract may look like with the law enforcement. No date is set, but I'll be working with that committee to set that date here in the next few weeks. law enforcement. No date is set, but I'll be working with that maybe just on that date here in the next few weeks. I did want to mention that Planning and Zoning will be meeting next week on Tuesday at six fifteen. They have, are going to be reviewing a draft for some zoning changes that have to do with the easement setbacks for fences and retaining walls and also building sites. Kevin and Dave were both at the last Planning and Zoning meeting, we we heard a lot of input from the public and looked at some examples from other communities, and we have a draft ordinance ready for them to look at. So we'll get their feedback, and at some point, hopefully that will come before once, once we get a little further with that. So that, and that is the only item I want to jump for next week.
Tough points. All right. Mayor Thomas, just one thing, Amy and Personnel Committee on the process for looking to fill our open position.
Thank you.
All right, next, motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all favors that?
All right.
All right.
Those opposed?